So you're welcome. We're bringing some Florida.
Lucky.
Hey, Paul. How's the weather? Is it hot or...
Good.
Good evening and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Dyton Board of Selectmen. Wednesday, December 28th. It is 6:00 PM. This is a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person at Old Town Hall, 111 Somerset Avenue. It's a Zoom meeting. The information, login information is 895-954-98612. The passcode, 301470. Or you may log in by phone at 1305-224-1968. Public input may be provided using the following methods: contacting our office before the meeting, Board of Selectmen at dytonmass-dyton-ma.gov to provide input prior to the meeting, or via Zoom call-in by phone at the above number. If this meeting is being recorded and there will be continued play on Dyton Channel 9 and on YouTube at www.youtube.com/townofdyton. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. At this time, I will call the order. Selectmen Kent Pacheco is not present. He is ill. Also present on Zoom is Mr. Peter Karen, our clerk. Peter, could you acknowledge for the record your presence at this meeting?
I am present.
Thank you. I am Chairman Leonard Hull. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence in memory of Richard Ogden and Ann Collins?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Since our last meeting, the Dyton community has suffered two losses. Richard J. Ogden, 68, of Dyton, passed away unexpectedly at work on Monday, December 19th. He was the husband of 43 years to Darlene Stevens Ogden. Also, Ann P. Collins. In North Dyton, Ann P. Collins, aged 95, passed away peacefully in her home following a lengthy illness on December 17th, 2022. Ann was the wife of the late John R. Collins. She was born in North Dyton and the daughter of the late Edward and Alice Carter Johnson. Could I ask for a moment of silence at this time? Thank you. And our condolences go out to the families of Ms. Collins and Mr. Ogden. Thank you. There are no scheduled appointments, so the first item on the agenda is public input. Before I take any inquiry or comments from the public, I would just like to go over a few things because public input will be limited to five minutes. We ask... We ask that public input not be critical of employees of the town or any employee of the town, since they have bargaining rights and union rights. Should you have any concerns about an employee of the town, please address them with the Town Administrator Michael Mullin. Also, any employees of the town who have business that they would like to bring up, it is asked that you see the people in the Selectmen's office to be placed on the agenda. And last, we pride ourselves as a town of the big heart. With that being said, we ask that comments be respectful and the use of profanity will not be tolerated. With that being said, is there anyone who would like to address us this evening? Next on the agenda are announcements. Please note that the townwide parking ban is in effect from November 1st, 2022 through April 1st, 2023. No person shall park a motor vehicle on any street between the hours of 12:00 midnight and 6:00 AM on any street from November 1st of each year to April 1st of the following year. Mr. Ferry has mentioned that there have been some people in the past who have not taken this seriously, and he has advised Dyton Police to enforce this parking ban. Town of Dyton Food Bank Distribution will be held next on January 21st, 2023, located at all level of Town Hall, 979 Somerset Avenue. I would also like to add to the announcements that the Dyton Water District is continuing to work on Main Street. If any resident has concerns, they should address them directly with the Water District Office on William Street, or they may speak to the woman of the crew on Main Street. Also, under Water District Business, they are upgrading and repairing water meters, and they encourage people to receive DITC to call the office to schedule an appointment for repairs. With that being said, next on the agenda is old business. We have the second reading of the ambulance billing policy.
Yes, this... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is in accordance with town policy. This is a second reading on the proposed policy. One of the things, actually, the beginning of this week, like we pulled together our financial team just to make sure that after the first reading, that no member of our financial team had, like, any further comments or concerns. Like, in doing that, we noticed that under the financial hardship write-off section, we had a typo that we identified from the first version. We fixed the typo, so the second version should be closer to what we hope will be the final form at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I would like to be purpose and the specific policy so that the public will be aware of what the ambulance billing policy entails. The purpose of this policy is to establish fair and equitable guidelines relating to all aspects of ambulance service billing for the Dyton Fire Department and the Town of Dyton. This policy will cover account abatements and hardship write-offs of ambulance services. It is the policy of the Fire Department, Dyton Fire Department, to bill all patients for receiving services for emergency medical transportation to a medical facility and to pursue reasonable measures to collect billed amounts, except where waiver of the fee is warranted due to financial hardship. This policy shall apply to all patients receiving emergency medical services from the Dyton Fire Department personnel. A patient shall be considered any person receiving, at minimum, a medical assessment for injuries, illness, potential injuries and illnesses, and mental, psychological evaluations. The guidelines set forth in this policy do not cover outside agencies, such as mutual aid ambulances, that are called in for mutual aid purposes. The fire chief is hereby designated to act on behalf and as an agent of the Board of Selectmen in administering these policies. This is the second reading of this policy. At our next meeting, we will have the third reading and a vote. If any member of the community has concerns, they may attend public input at the next meeting to voice them before the vote, or they may submit a letter to Town Administrator Mullin's office so that the Board of Selectmen will have the opportunity to review it prior to our vote. Does Mullin have anything further on that?
No, I don't, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
We have public notice. Town Clerk's Office, notice of opt-out of vote by mail. It will be a public hearing on January 11th, 2022. Mr. Mullin, do you have anything?
Yes, so like on Wednesday, January 11th, 2023, at 6:00 PM here at Old Town Hall, the Selectmen, as you mentioned, will conduct a hearing on a request by the Town Clerk to opt out of no-excuse vote by mail, like per Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022, for the Saturday, April 8th, 2023 annual town election. Like, in this... A need for the hearing is actually brought up. Like, Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022 is a law recently passed by the legislature where, like, in order to... In order for a city or town to opt out of vote by mail, they need to have a hearing in accordance with the law. So the hearing that is set for January 11th, is a hearing that's required by law, Mr. Chairman.
Now, it's also my understanding that Mr. Pacheco will need time, if this does pass, to have that... Or doesn't pass, to have it put... To go to the printer to print ballots, should it fail. With that in mind, I'm looking for a timeline of when a vote by the Board of Selectmen needs to happen. On the 11th? Or would it happen the last meeting in January?
The vote... The vote... The vote could happen no later than the last meeting in January. The Town Clerk, by law, he needs 45 days. He needs... So he needs... He needs to know 45 days in advance of the... Of the specific election. So even the meeting on January 25th, oh, you know, that was the date that was originally proposed by the Town Clerk, but there was an agreement to move the hearing up for the edification for everybody. Oh, yeah, but as long as it's... So, yeah, to answer your question, as long as we meet the... So the 45-day in advance of the annual town election requirement, so we should be good? So, like, really, the vote has the ability to happen, like, on the 11th or the 25th? I mean, for our practical purposes.
Thank you. And, Mr. Karen, I don't know how Mr. Pacheco or you feel about this, but I'm an individual who likes to hear public input, have the opportunity to digest it and think it through before we take a final vote.
Okay.
With that being said, would you be okay if on January 11th we had the public hearing and then we took the vote on January 25th?
I am okay with that.
Would you put that in the form of motion, sir?
I'd make that motion as great.
I will step down as Chair to second the motion that the meeting, public hearing of the Town Clerk to opt out of no-excuse voting will be held January 11th at 6:00 PM at Dyton Old Town Hall, and that the Board of Selectmen will then vote on it on January 25th, 2023, at their 6:00 PM meeting, regular scheduled meeting. Mr. Karen, are you in favor of this?
Yes, I am. Aye.
Chairman Hull votes aye. The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Karen.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda are Selectmen Reports. Mr. Karen, do you have any updates on Solid Waste or any of the other committees that you serve on?
No, I do not.
I included under the announcements my comment regarding Dyton Water District and the Dyton schools are closed for the holiday season. So as a result, there will be no Selectmen report from my... From me. At this point, giant, under new business, Health Department Office Manager's resignation of Rosalyn Grassi. I received a letter from Rosalyn Grassi, December 5th, 2022. Dear Board Members and Stormwater Chairman Gulak, please accept this letter as a formal notice of my resignation from the position of Office Manager for the Town of Dyton Board of Health. After careful consideration, I have made the decision to resign effective December 31st, 2022. Working for the Town of Dyton has been a wonderful experience that has afforded me many valuable opportunities to learn and grow, and I am grateful to have been part of this organization. I have been looking for a challenge to see out the rest of my career, and an opportunity has presented itself to me, and I could not pass it up. I will do all in my power to minimize any inconvenience caused to anyone by my resignation. I will put forth every effort to facilitate a smooth transition during my remaining three-plus weeks. I had the opportunity for the past two years to work with Ms. Grassi, a fine lady and outstanding contributor to the Board of Health and the Town of Dyton, and she will be sadly missed. Mr. Karen? Hello?
Certainly agree. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I certainly agree. I mean, obviously, she's been with us since the... Several years, just with the zoning Board of Appeals, and I agree with that view of you that she would be missed.
At this time, I will accept... I will entertain a motion to accept resignation letter of Rosalyn Grassi with thanks and appreciation.
Make that motion.
I will step down as Chair to second the motion. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the job description of the Board of Health Manager, Ms. Grassi's position. Mr. Mullin?
Yes, thank you. So the proposed job description... The job description was, like, actually one of the... One of the products where all of our job... Where all of our clerical union job descriptions were redrafted as part of the raging classification study. But with that, the Board of Health met in a meeting yesterday afternoon, where the board reviewed the proposed job description, made tweaks to the proposed job description and what you... And what the board has for its review and consideration. Is the approved job description that came out of and was voted on by the Board of Health in yesterday afternoon's meeting. And the structure of the position would remain the same. The grade would remain the same as well. And with the board's approval of the updated job description, we would seek to post the Office Manager position, both internally and externally as soon as possible, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This current position is a 35-hour position. It's a Grade VI union position, and the union has weighed in on this, and they have also approved it as presented. Mr. Karen, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
With that, I will entertain a motion to accept the Board of Health Office Manager Administrative Support Job Description and to post accordingly.
Make that motion.
I'll step down as Chair to second that motion. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Next on the agenda is the Dyton Rehoboth Regional School District's Budget Deadline Request Letter. We received a letter from Superintendent Rooney. I hope this letter finds you well in preparing for a joyous holiday season. I am writing today regarding Section X, Article B of the regional agreement, specifically the first sentence that states thereafter, on or before January 15th of each year, the committee shall annually prepare a tentative capital operating budget. I have been told, anecdotally, that this deadline has been traditionally pushed to February 15th for at least the past decade. I have searched to Norveil for documentation of the official change from the January deadline to the February date, but as Superintendent Rooney has mentioned, past practice has been February 15th. My administration has made every effort to abide by the regional agreement, and I do not want to make any assumptions. Given the district until February 15th allows my team to more thoughtfully prepare a budget that is more accurate, a more accurate representation of our needs, which in turn gives each town a more realistic picture of what to expect. Additionally, the task force discussions at Dyton-Rehoboth Regional High School on October 19th, attended by Selectmen Deegan, Hull, and Vatney... Deegan and Vatney are from Rehoboth, focused on eventually solidifying a March deadline. Your willingness to consider a March deadline leads me to believe that February 15th would be acceptable to you. But in an effort to be transparent, I want to be sure that you approve. I would be grateful for your permission to have a mutual understanding that the district will present its first iteration of the fiscal year 24 budget by February 15th, 2023. And he's looking for a response in a... Before the end of the year so that he can make plans accordingly, Mr. Karen. With that being said, past practice has been February 15th. So, Mr. Karen, unless you have some objections, I will entertain a motion to set the Dyton-Rehoboth Regional School District Budget Deadline to February 15th, 2023.
I have no objections to that.
I will step down as Chairman to second the motion. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco? Mr. Karen, sorry.
Aye.
And Chairman Hull is an aye. Next on the agenda is the Review and Discuss Act to Approve Annual Common Victual Renewals. Before we approve these, I do want to mention that these... The approval of these licenses is contingent upon these business owners being up to date in all fees and taxes to the town. Mr. Mullin, do you have anything that you would like to add before we vote on these?
No, I don't. You do have the other correspondence with regards to the common victual licenses, like, from an administrative assistant, that Crowe. But, yeah, like, as you mentioned, if they could be all considered, I can approve the contingent on all our taxes and fees being paid. That would be recommended, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Karen, do you have any questions?
What's going on with Mannheim?
So...
Mr. Mullin? So, yes, Mannheim, we have been in touch with them for more than the past week. They are, like, going through a process, an existing process through their accounts payable department to get everything up to date, and we believe everything should be up to date in very short order. Like, due to a very small amount of money, like, unpaid taxes that we were told just really relates to, like, a miscommunication between their local office here in Dyton and their national office. So that is one of the reasons... That is one of the reasons, Mr. Karen, that we're recommending the approval but contingent on all fees and taxes being paid.
Okay, I agree with that.
With that being said, I will read the applicant's business names that are looking for renewal. 1712 Corporation, Alice's Last Stop, CNN Pizza, Dyton House of Pizza, Dunkin' Donuts, 420 Somerset Avenue, St. Nicholas of Myra Church, Taunton Yacht Club, Dyton Country Diner, and Mannheim Remarketing Incorporated. Do I have a second on that motion?
Okay. That action, do I have to make the motion?
Yes, you do. I'm sorry.
I make that motion as a void.
I will step down as Chair to second that motion. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco? I'm sorry, Mr. Karen?
How many times can I do that?
I usually do it by seniority. Sorry about that.
It doesn't matter.
It's okay. Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is also an aye, and it passes. Next on the agenda, Review and Discuss Act, the Annual Dealer's License Renewal. And as was the case for the vitual license, these... Approval of these licenses is contingent upon all of these businesses being up to date with their fees and taxes to the Town of Dyton. With that being said, I will read the names of the businesses that are included. Class II, Bristol County Auto Sales, Kimball Enterprises, North Dyton Garage. Class II Bristol County Auto Sales, Kimball Enterprises, Norf Dyton Garage, Advanced Auto Repairs, Mannheim Remarketing Incorporated. Class III Borges Foreign Auto, Bristol County Auto Incorporated, and an entertainment license for Seventeen Twelve Corporation. I will entertain a...
Peter, we're getting some feedback from your audio.
Okay, sorry.
It's okay, no worries.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes. Mr. Karen, I will...
Okay, I make that motion, I make that motion as though ready.
I will step down as Chair to second the motion. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye, motion passes. Surely was a short meeting. Again, does anyone have any input that they would like to present to the town, or questions or concerns? We are on Item 10, Public Input Second Session. Yes, please, thank you.
Jennifer Dushkasi, 2413 County Street. I just wonder if the Board of Selectmen has sought the advice of the Secretary of State's Office in regards to the vote by mail opt-out, and whether that vote is really truly in the hands of the Board of Selectmen or in the hands of the citizens.
It is my understanding through Mr. Pacheco, and I will make sure, 100% sure, that he has that in writing, that it is, it is the vote of the Board of Selectmen. I wanted to see that in writing, however. He came before us at the last meeting, and we asked him that, and he said it was up to the Board of Selectmen, so we will verify that to be 100% sure.
So we'll have that available on the 11th?
Oh, by the 11th, definitely.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Oh, it's better to do it the right way than have to redo it again, so, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, approval of the warrants. Mr. Karen, I am going to ask, I'm going to read the warrant and ask that you, um, motion to approve it once I have read the warrant.
Okay.
Approval of the warrant dated December 21, 2022. Twenty-five A dash 23, $122,998.44. Twenty-five B dash 23, $676,459.45. Twenty-five C dash 23, $2,562.75. I will entertain a motion to approve the warrant dated December 21, 2022.
Make that motion to approve the warrant dated, who put you say, December 21?
Yes.
Of December 21, 2022.
I will step down as Chair to second that motion. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Also, I want to entertain a motion to approve the warrant dated December 28, 2022. Twenty-six A dash 23, $144,037.73. Twenty-six B dash 23, $19,874.18. Twenty-six C dash 23, $75,311.37. Mr. Karen, I'll entertain that in the form of a motion, please.
Uh, make that motion as ready.
I will step down as Chair to second that motion. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Before I entertain a motion to enter into executive session, I would like to thank Mr. Karen, who is on vacation, who took the time away from his vacation to attend this meeting, and his presence this evening was important, or we were not going to be able to approve those licenses for those businesses that really needed it to stay open come January 1st. So, Mr. Karen, thank you very much. And secondly...
You're welcome.
To the residents of Dyton, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, best wishes to a happy and healthy New Year. With that be, being said, I will entertain a motion under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and he does declare. We will be discussing specifically negotiations of the upcoming contract for the Dyton Town Clerical Union. Mr. Karen, I will need you to make that in the form of a motion.
A motion is though ready, but we're not returning from executive session.
That is correct. We will not be returning from executive session. I will step down as Chair to second that motion. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Have a good evening.